Call the order, the town, the Avon Town Council Meeting for June 22, 2023. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Loker, would you please mind and take a roll call, please?
Greg Susan?
Present.
Don Loudon?
Present.
Robert Pope? Tim Roberts?
Present.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Present.
Thank you. First on my agenda is the consent agenda this evening is the approval of the check register, excuse me, the check register for June 22, 2023, the meeting minutes from the work session of June 8, 2023, along with the approval of the minutes for the town council meeting on June 8, 2023. Are there any questions on the items for the consent agenda?
I have none.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve them as presented.
Second.
Next item on the agenda is public comment.
I'll take roll call first.
Thank you.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
And Tim Roberts?
Four.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is the first of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not public hearing or on a specific matter with the council's jurisdiction. This is not a Q and A session, but an opportunity to share your comments with council. Please step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Seeing that no one has come forward, we'll close that section of public comment and move on to council comments and liaison reports. Ms. Loudon?
Nothing to report other than we've got the Riverfest coming up, so it'll be a nice place for the community members to come together and go have some food and have some fun and see some of their neighbors. That's all.
Mr. Suzanne?
I have nothing.
Mr. Eisenbarth?
I'm under pressure to say nothing, but I really want to go on and on. No, I'll just say the youth program, Youth Assistance Program, that's been progressing on discussions. So I have a meeting with the schools on Tuesday evening, and we've been emailing some information questions back and forth. So I just give you a progress report that seems to be moving along. I still need to meet with the county to kind of get some concurrence and see where they are with interlocal agreement, but that's, give you a little feedback that way. That's all I've got.
Perfect, thank you. For myself, I attended the Spotlight Breakfast last Friday. It was an amazing event that Mr. Pope had put on with the Chambers. I thought he did an excellent job of speaking on behalf of the town. I also had an opportunity to attend the Citizens Public Academy right along with Sergeant Schwartz last week. That was an amazing experience. I cannot wait to do the night shift. Cannot wait. That is all for me. Moving on to new business. First up is replacement of police vehicle. I assume that you're speaking to that, sir?
Yes, sir. Dave Margerson, Deputy Chief with the Avon Police Department. We are requesting permission to proceed with a purchase of a new Chevy Tahoe to replace a vehicle that was deemed a total loss from a collision that occurred a month or two ago. The insurance is advising that our portion of the check would be $27,714.17 after the loan is paid off and our deductible. The vehicle that we are looking to purchase, that's up at Kelly Chevrolet in Fort Wayne, is $42,400. So our request is to utilize $14,685.83 to pay the balance. That amount would come from surplus funds that are in our existing 2023 budget. Happy to answer any other questions you may have if I can.
Dave, maybe just speak to the, I know there's some salvage that you can have of reuse the equipment from some of the things that, can you speak to a few of those items?
I wish I could. We're still waiting on a list from Weimeyer to tell us exactly what equipment they're able to reuse.
Okay.
I don't know what all that is. I can tell you that the light bar was completely smashed, so that's not going to be reusable, but some of the internal components, I would guess, are still good. But Deputy Chief Nugent is waiting on a list from the gentleman there still.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
So you're seeking to purchase the replacement vehicle, but you're also seeking to have the clerk treasurer pay off $27,714.17, both?
No, ma'am, that would be the remaining portion that's valued of the vehicle that was a total loss. The insurance is sending a check to the bank, and then we would retain the $27,714.
So I can help, I can help you with this, Dave. So insurance paid us the $27,000, goes back into the CCD fund where we paid for the car from initially. The other $14,000 is going to come from their budget that's already budgeted for in the general fund, so it would be a split portion. The money's already accounted for. This was one of the six that they talked about at the last meeting that they need to pick up tomorrow because all the cars are in. So whoever makes a motion, if you could just say?
$14,685.83.
Well, just say for the purchase of the full purchase of the Tahoe, $42 and some change.
$42,400, yeah.
And then give me permission to cut a check tomorrow so that they can take it up there and get the vehicle. So just give me authorization to make payment immediately.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize to purchase a replacement Tahoe as stated on the invoice in the amount of $42,400, check made payable to Kelly Chevrolet and for the clerk treasurer to cut that check. Perfect.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Julie, will you take a roll call vote, please?
I have a question. The $2,500 deductible is also coming from the $47,744.17, or are we paying for that out of our own pocket?
That's part of that 14 that will come out of the general fund.
Doesn't add up.
My understanding was that it, you had the initial amount, which I can't recall, from the insurance. You deducted?
Minus the 20, yeah.
$47,744.17.
Minus the bank loan, minus?
Minus, minus the deductible, which left you with the $27,714.17.
So we only owe the 14 technically.
That leaves a $14,685.83. Julie, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yep. Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the paving of the Town Hall Park quotes. Ryan, will you be speaking to this?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and handle this. Our Parks Director is on her honeymoon, so I told her that I would handle it for her, even though she was dying to just dial in and do it, but I said I'd go ahead and do it. There are three locations in the park that the Parks Department would like to pave. One is the connection from Avon United Methodist Church over to the town. The other one is from Parkside Church over to the town trail. And then the third spot is from the trail over to the amphitheater. And so they are trying to get this work done prior to Night at the Park, which is actually next week. So you'll notice in the quote that they said they'd complete the work within seven days. So they have committed to us that they would do it next week. They've got it on their schedule, subject to the town council approving it. Shelby did seek quotes. We did go to smaller people. We had tried last year to get quotes to do this. The big companies, the milestones, the ENBs, they're not really interested in this kind of small work. So this company, we had reached out to a few driveway paving companies, which this company is one of those, and we did do some research on them. They had good grades on the Better Business Bureau as far as being reliable and doing good work. So I think we are comfortable with that quote. Their quote is for $29,500. I will share, I know that seems like a lot, but Steve had actually gotten a quote last year, and it was over $41,000, so it actually is a pretty good quote. The other thing I did want to mention is that they asked for a deposit. That's pretty typical for them when they're doing driveways, but we said, hey, we're a town, can we not pay the deposit? And they said they were fine with that, but they did ask that if we did not pay a deposit, if we would get approval to cut them a check upon completion of work. So if you guys are agreeable to doing this, subject to them finishing it next week, if you guys would authorize Julie to make payment to them upon completion of the work, since they are a small company, we would appreciate that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a little thing here. So the stone base they're putting down, I know being a small firm, they probably don't test the stone, you know, but the compaction of that, do we, and we're not going to have an inspector, right, on that?
No, we would probably use our own park staff, or even our public works staff would probably assist with that. But no, we wouldn't necessarily require like nuclear testing or something like that on the grade, but.
Yeah, but I guess just a visual that they can make sure that, you know, you get some moisture in it and that it's compacted well before we put that down. I know those are obvious things, but with a small firm, I think it's good that somebody watches for that.
Right.
So that's all.
Good point. We'll keep an eye on that.
My question is, this is a roofing company that's going to be doing this?
They're not really a roofing company. It's Samco Roofing and Asphalt, so they do both. Even though it shows up in their names, they have a roofing division and they have an asphalt division. But we did, I had the same concern, which is why we looked them up and made sure we knew what we were getting into, so.
Do we know where they're getting their HMA from?
I do not know that, no.
Yeah.
We can check, though.
Yeah, just see if it's one of the main firms, and then we can kind of check to see that what they did, you know, got it from there.
Do they have any references?
They didn't provide any to Shelby, but there were some on the website. Again, there were, there were people who had given responses to how the quality of work was, but we didn't check them beyond that now.
I just have one question, Ryan. Are they licensed and bonded?
They are, yes.
Okay.
I think it's good to give a small firm a chance. I just, the questions are natural, you know, we have to just be careful there and watch it, so.
Are they local?
They are, they're out of Plainfield.
Yeah. So I'm favorable for it, yeah.
On their invoice, they didn't spell Plainfield correctly.
Well, then again, they spelled Avon, right?
Any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Sam Crow Roofing Services, the quote for $29,500 be accepted as presented and authorize the clerk treasurer Julie to make payment.
Upon completion.
Upon completion and DPW's acceptance.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Mrs. Loker, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Susan?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the pedestrian signal at County Road 200 North and Bicentennial Trail.
I'm handling this one as well. Steve's in Florida this week, so this is actually, we've, we've done a little bit twofold. As you guys know, that the township has had some issues with the pedestrian crossing on 625, and they were having some issues getting quotes, and so we actually offered to assist them in getting quotes. While we were doing that, Steve and I had identified that the pedestrian crossing at 200 North and the Bicentennial Trail, which is a relatively highly traveled pedestrian crossing, it doesn't have a pedestrian crossing. And we've identified a couple of others, but we feel like this one is a high priority and therefore kind of warranted addressing more quickly than other ones. And so Steve actually, at the time, got, had them provide a quote to provide two of those. So we're bringing one of them to you guys for approval. The other one is being sent to the Township Board for approval for them to actually fix the one at 625 by Murphy Aquatic Park. So this is solar powered, so you can see, I think Steve attached the specifications there. This is the same kind of pedestrian crossing we put up on Avon Avenue, where the school corporation crosses Avon Avenue to get to their athletic facilities at Intermediate East. And so we're comfortable, this is our standard, it's what we specified. Steve did all the work in specifying it and requesting. We did request quotes from six different companies, and we did only receive one. Signal Construction, if you guys recall, is out doing some work on some of our traffic signals as well, so that's probably why they were willing to provide a quote on this. A lot of the other companies, well, they're too busy with the end dot work and other stuff, so that's probably why we only got one quote. Again, this was actually, the township had gotten some quotes, and it was almost three times as expensive as what Steve was able to get. So kudos to Steve and his staff for getting a good price on this, the both same township and the town money for this. So we do recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Ryan, as he said, for the quantities, for two, that had the second, the other quota for the township is completely different?
That's correct. At one time, they had, well, this is, so you'll notice on here, it was for two locations, but there's still two poles because there's one from each direction. So what's in front of you is the $26,934 is just the towns. So the township is $26,000 as well.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Location is both 625 and 200 North, because your invoice just says location is County Road 625 East.
Correct. We'll have them, so originally, they just gave us one quote for both, and we asked them to split them out. So when they split it out, they probably just didn't fix the information, they just fixed the price. But the location will be 200 North, we will not be putting it at 625.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from Signal Construction Incorporated for, in the amount of $26,934 for the crosswalk signal pole pedestal crossing for the location at County Road 200 North and Bicentennial Trail.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Loker, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cannon, you're going to be worn out tonight.
Yeah, getting, earning my money today.
Next one?
The next one, John's here too, so John may pop up if you guys have some questions. Again, I think we've talked quite a bit about this project, but part of one of our economic development efforts is to assist developments that we think are in the best interest of the town by doing what we kind of refer to as developer purchase bonds. These are a good way for us to help incentivize the type of economic development that we want in our community and things we think will benefit us. But it's also a way that we protect ourselves by having the developer actually purchase those bonds, so that if they don't actually do the investment and build the products, then the money doesn't actually come back to pay them. So the town ends up in the backend pledging TIF revenue to basically pay back those bonds as long as the developer does their work. So this one in front of you tonight is for the Eastern Gray in the Riverwalk District, for Eastern Gray, which as you guys all know is a 600 acre development just west of the Town Hall here on the west side of the Whitelake Creek. And so this basically lays out the terms of what we both intend to do and what, what our obligations are moving forward. I will say, from a business perspective, the way we always handle these is the LOI is non-binding on both property, both entities or parties. And so what we're asking you tonight is to do that. I know, I think when I spoke with you guys at the work session, there were a few concerns about the financing piece of it. There's really nothing in the financing piece in this LOI. Those are things that will show up in the actual final project agreement. So the final project agreement will come back to you as well, so you guys will see that again before moving forward. We had a very productive meeting with them yesterday on the financing side, and I think that went better than any of us expected on the call, so I'm happy to report that to all of you. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If you guys have any questions specifically about the LOI, otherwise our staff would recommend approval, and if John wants to share anything, he's happy to do that.
And Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Taylor, this is strictly for the motion of the letter of intent for the district, the Eastern Gray and the HOPOA District Infrastructure.
Right. It's a non-binding letter, which just says the parties are willing to go forward further with this concept and work out the details of the development agreement or project agreement, which would be returned to you with all of those details. This just is both parties signaling that they want to continue to negotiate.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
And I would share as well, Dan pointed out, the Redevelopment Commission has already seen this, and the Redevelopment Commission did approve it as well, so.
No, I, I'll just comment that I think it's a good thing to go forward with the Riverwalk District, and so, yeah, and be non-binding, and it just says it's stated down there in the project agreement, that's fine with me, too.
Any other questions?
What is the town's bonding capacity?
Well, so the way these bonds work, they don't, they don't count against our bonding capacity, which is why we do them this way. I don't know what the specific number is, but.
That was the right answer.
You're gonna see, you're gonna see it here probably next month when we start talking about the capital improvement plan. That's a part of the capital improvement plan, Greg provides that information. And so when we talk about the CIP, that's something that we'll share with you.
You do talk on page two about you're going to investigate at a future point in time, a parking structure for 225 vehicles. That's going to be above and beyond the 16.9 million Riverwalk and the 10.5 million HOPA district, right?
That's correct. So that's, the developer asked for that to be in here. There had been some discussion at one point in time, that parking structure was proposed as part of Phase One, and so we've pushed that out, and so we still wanted to mention it in the agreement as something that was still on the table, but that it wasn't really a part of Phase One. So we didn't want that to necessarily slow us down to continue moving when it's something that's really not going to happen now, but it is something we may revisit later. And so again, for everyone to be aware of.
Non-binding.
Right.
Keyword, non-binding. Yeah. Any other questions?
Then this, does this bond or these bonds and provide us early redemption opportunities? Those details haven't been worked out. Those details haven't been worked out yet, although we've had, our team, which consists of Heather James, our bond counsel, Greg Garitas, and Charlie Joyce from financial, our financial advisors, will be working on those, and from our point of view, those, those matters, we'll negotiate from whatever's best for us and then the lender. But on developer purchase bonds, generally, we aren't as concerned about that. In publicly issued bonds, we're trying to make the bonds marketable. And so we try, we put various provisions in regarding early redemption or no early redemption, just to, on the issue of marketability. These bonds won't be treated that way because they're not going to be publicly marketed, the developers' bonds.
Okay.
But on a publicly issued bond, that would be a very important matter. We'd want to be strategic about.
That's all I have. Anybody like to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we approve the letter of intent for the Avon Riverwalk District and Eastern Gray HOPA District Infrastructure Agreement as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Loker, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Don Loudon?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Government Center Selectory Delivery Method.
You don't have David Rainey come up. Again, this was something we talked a little bit about in our work session, and so we've had some offline meetings about this, and so I'll turn it over to Dave to maybe just introduce that to you guys a little bit, and I think we've got a recommendation for you guys in terms of delivery method.
Thank you. David Rainey with Veritas Group. The last time I was with you, I gave quite a lengthy update on, on the project to date. One of the things we didn't have a lot of time to cover were the, was the delivery method. And as Mr. Cannon just said, since that time, we've had lengthy discussions with town staff, with the attorneys and financial side of both the town and the, and the school. Looking at all the deliveries, we've kind of unanimously determined that the statute 532, the CMC delivery, would be the most appropriate for this particular project. So that is, at this point, the delivery that we're going to be proceeding with. We're not ready to put that RFP out yet. It probably won't go out until probably late July, if not early August. We are in the process, after an update to the school and with a vote there to move forward from their end on the project, we're going to release the architect for schematic design, which has already gone to RDC, and we've discussed that, they've approved that, contention upon the school's support. We'll let them get some traction with that schematic design, and then we'll put this RFP out. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have with regard to this.
Can you put those four options, I think it was, up there for us to look at?
I can discuss them.
You have to say, I don't think we have them prepared, but Jared, if we talk for a minute, Jared may be able to pull them up from.
So I can go ahead and review those for you. So the ones that we looked at, I believe we discussed the CMA, which is part of 36112, which is IC 516, construction manager is agent, we discussed CMC, which is 532, construction manager is constructor, and then we also talked about the BOT, which is statute 523, were the three that we discussed. And again, after we had lengthy discussions with the, with the legal from both the town and the school, and we talked on the financial side of that, really given this project and the uniqueness of this, that we have, this is not only just a town project, but also the school is heavily invested and will be contributing a large amount of money to the project, this is, this just is the most appropriate delivery, given the, the public delivery of that, how we go out for that RFP. We publicly bid that, so very transparent, and those bids coming back. And, and quite frankly, this is something that the schools across the state of NE have used regularly as a delivery for their projects. And in addition to that, the other deliveries, in particular BOT, to date has never been used by a school in the. used by a school in the state of Indiana. So, this is a very unique project, and probably not the right time to do that, so.
Well, I remember when you showed them, I think you also said, this is one that favored the town, this is one that didn't favor the town, this is one the BOT people weren't really used to, so I wanna see, seeing it's not here, what you just proposed, is that the one that's favorable to the town, not favorable to the town, where, where do we end up?
Yeah, so the CMC delivery, uh, it is a delivery method that does mitigate a lot of risk for the town, there you go, that's the, the slide there. It allows the CM to perform 20% of the work, it's a low to moderate risk from our perspective, because the, the CM has to give you guaranteed maximum price, they're on board during delivery to price, and they're not just pricing, um, they, they've got skin in the game on that. At the end of that, they're given a guaranteed maximum price to deliver that project. Um, it's been around, you know...
Or they make up the difference, correct?
Right, so they're, they're responsible, obviously, if there's change orders that are unknowns, there's contingencies for that, um, but, uh, but what they bid, that guaranteed maximum price, they're, they're responsible for that. So, it is favorable to, uh, I would say of, of the deliveries, it's one of the deliveries that is, that mitigates the risk of the municipality or school, uh, so.
And from what I heard, nothing has changed from our last meeting?
No.
Nothing. So everything was in favor of the town, favor of the school?
That's right.
Move forward.
Yep.
So the motion would be moved forward to present for Veritas for the RFP, correct?
Yes, and the, on our, our P exactly, but the, the, one of the big advantages is that you're, you are allowed to choose the construction manager through a quality-based process. You don't, otherwise, you don't have to take the construction manager who has the lowest bid, like you do in a, a traditional, um, traditional method or CMA method, you're, it gives you, you more latitude about who you wanna work with. The subcontracting is all bid, and so that is very transparent and follows the public bidding process, which is designed to give you the lowest prices on the other work that'll be done. It also is a little flexible, because it does, as David said, allow the construction manager to perform some of the more routine types of work, up to 20%. So, and again, that would be part of your guaranteed maximum price, and so sometimes there's, uh, special savings there because you really kind of negotiate that. Uh, so it's a little more, it's a lot more flexible approach than kind of a traditional approach, but it, it, the reason it's good for you in terms of, you, you gotta choose who you wanna work with, rather than ha, when you do a, if you bid that, you're stuck with the construction manager that is the low bid, which may or may not be what you really want. It also does the guaranteed maximum price, which is usually something that, um, the owners like, and my clients like, is that it, it does give you a chance to work through a process of, of saying, at, at a certain stage of the proceedings, we're gonna determine and agree to the guaranteed maximum price, and, and then you get the benefit of that, and that shifts the risk of cost overruns to the construction manager. Of course, the construction manager has control over most of that, so that makes perfect sense. And so when, uh, David presented before and talked about the shifting of some of these risks, uh, I thought he made a great point about, you know, we, we're able to shift away risks that we don't wanna carry, uh, cost overruns, that sort of thing, and also shift away the risk that you're stuck with a partner, in terms of a working partner, that you don't really want. This method al, allows, uh, the, the government entity a lot more of what they want in processes. My clients who've used it have been very happy with it, it is almost, I would say, I would say in 90 to 95% of school projects, it's used, and probably 80 to 85% of, uh, other government building, public works projects. And so it is a ve, it is probably the most common, uh, now, in, in the recent, uh, three years, it's probably become the most common, uh, delivery method used, and, uh, does, I think, have advantages, and I think in the RDC's view, and as David mentioned, your team that evaluated it, uh, overall, we thought clearly the advantageous option for you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we move forward with the Government Center selection of delivery method as presented by David from Veritas.
Second.
Mrs. Locur, take a roll call vote, please.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the letter of intent for the town property located at County Road 100 North and Dan Jones Road. Ryan, will you be speaking to this?
Yeah, I'll speak to it. Um, I think, again, we, we spoke about this previously, that the town, uh, received an offer, the town owns a piece of property on the corner of 100 North and Dan Jones Road, it's the southeast corner of the intersection, and so we received an offer to sell that property. And, um, so the town council has two options with this, uh, one, they can choose if, if we're not interested in selling it, obviously, the, the property's not on the market, the town didn't sell it, the reason the town owned the property in the first place was we had to acquire it when we built the roundabout at Dan Jones and 100 North, and there is a remnant piece left from it, so that's kind of the remnant piece. Uh, so the town can either, uh, reject the offer and say, we're not interested in selling it, or your other alternative is, if, if we are interested in selling it, the next step would be to instruct the staff to go get two appraisals, because we have to, we are not permitted to sell the property for less than the average of the two appraisals. So, if we are interested in selling it, then the staff would be looking for a direction to go do those two appraisals. And I'm, Dan and I are happy to answer any questions, if you guys have questions.
Any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to reject the letter of intent on the town property at the corner of County Road 100 North and Dan Jones Road.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Locur, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Tim Roberts?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance, introduction of ordinance 2023-11 Internal Controls Policy Regarding Federal Grants and Cost Principles.
Yes, this is introduction of an ordinance which would adopt new internal control policies for the town. One of the points of emphasis, uh, for the State Board of Accounts this year is, uh, how we administer federal monies that we receive. And so, um, the State Board of Accounts has issued guidelines about this, and this is our attempt to comply and formally adopt these rules. These rules are part of the Code of Federal Regulation already, and really already are binding upon us, but this would, uh, use, uh, this policy would have, uh, provide evidence that we intend to comply with that rule, and would, uh, direct our Clerk Treasurer and other officials who are handling that money and administering federal grants, uh, of money, uh, of where to go to find the standards and the concepts and the principles. And so you'll see that the ordinance itself is really pretty straightforward, that we adopt the policy and we incorporate, uh, to Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200, Subpart E, by reference, and if you really, uh, feel energetic and you're up for some good reading, go ahead and look at that, but we, on the next, uh, page, we have some of it for you, and you can see the actual policy five, which would be car, become part of the town's internal controls, uh, addresses some of the major parts of that, including the most important part is 503, the cost principle guidelines. So these are really accounting methods and compliance. Uh, the town does receive, uh, fairly substantial amount of federal, uh, grants, particularly as it relates to our road funding, but also the police have, from time to time, received some, and so this would be evidence to the State Board of Accounts that we are aware of the guidelines and intend to comply. This is first reading only.
Thank you.
It is a good reader, I'll tell you, it's... No, I, on a serious note, I, I really appreciate having the chart that shows the allowable and gives the comments under that, and then the items of costs required. I think that, that type of approach takes these thick documents that are hard to go through, and you can kind of look through it and say, oh, okay, I may not know all these sections, but I can see what, what the decision tree is, so, on a positive note, that's, I thought that was good. Otherwise, it's not that fun to read.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
None.
Next item on the agenda is legal counsel report.
I have nothing for you tonight, thank you. Uh, we will have two more internal control kind of ordinances coming forward, they both relate to federal funding, and again, just trying to keep us, uh, up to date with those, so you'll see those in your coming meetings.
Perfect, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second opportunity for public comment, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, address, and please limit your comment to three minutes. Seeing that no one has come forward, we'll close that section and we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is any additional counsel comment?
We passed the equinox, it's now everything's getting shorter. That's, that's the only comment.
Close that section, next item on the agenda is the counselor, counsel calendar.
Steve, you stole my thunder, that was on counsel calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, bummer.
I didn't see it listed there.
Just teasing. Um, so, our next meeting is July 13th, so you guys do get an extra week, this is one of those two times a year that you normally get an extra week, so you do have an extra week, uh, so we hope that instead of coming to a council meeting, that you'll join us for Night at the Park on July 1st, so Parks Department's working hard, getting prepared, ready for that, so, um, if you can join us on July 1st. I don't believe there will be a work session on July 13th, um, there may be some discussion as well, I'm gonna meet with Tim and Robert next week and talk about whether we, there may not even be a meeting on July 13th, so we may move the work session to the 27th, so I'll get back with you guys on a confirmation next week on that, so it is possible that our next meeting would be July 27th with a work session, and again, more, more to come. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. That concludes our town council meeting for June 22nd, 2023. Meeting adjourned.